Mr. Bustamante.
Present.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Jaramillo.
Present.
Ms. Quintero.
Present.
And Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Can I have a motion to approve our agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Roque. Bless you. Mr. Bustamante.
Aye.
Mr. Jaramillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero.
Aye.
Thank you. General functions, Ms. Carla Walters. Annual expenditure budget.
Good evening, President Quintero, members of the board, Superintendent Gastelum. I'm back here and with you tonight to bring back the budget that we presented at the last meeting. At that time, the budget was proposed and as required by the state of Arizona. We published the budget on the ADE website 10 days prior to today. Just letting the public know, you know, that we would be adopting the budget tonight. That's an opportunity for people in the community to provide feedback and we didn't receive any at this point in time. The budget, as you know, has to be adopted by July fifteenth, July 15th of each fiscal year. So we're well within that deadline. Again, nothing really different from the last presentation I provided, the same funds. Just a little bit of an update with the legislative session. This is the only thing that changed from my presentation from last time. The Arizona Legislature did in fact adjourn Friday, June 27th. That means that any bills that were passed and that were enacted would be enacted on September 26th, 2025. It's a 30, 90-day period. With the exception of budget measures, those would be available and operable at the beginning of fiscal year. There was a lot of talk about a state budget deficit of totally $1.8 billion, of which $200 million was a shortfall that was estimated for fiscal year '25. So I'm happy to report that that was covered and that was funded out of their new appropriation. So that's a way that the state balances their budget. The qualifying tax rate did decrease a little bit, no impact to the budget, only taxes and equalization that's received from the state of Arizona. The budget was approved with a 2% inflation adjustment to the base level from $5,013 to $5,113.26, as well as a transportation per mile funding level that was increased by 2%. Classroom site fund allocation increased from 792 to 842. So all these changes, we did anticipate some of these and those were captured in the budget that we proposed and with this adoption as well. On this next slide, just items of importance, building renewal grants. Again, the legislature continued building renewal grant funding at $200 million. This is the same amount of funding that was provided this last fiscal year. Couple of the things that we weren't really sure about was the one-time district additional assistance and free and reduced price lunch allocation. It was a one-time allocation and they've renewed that for this fiscal year, but we don't have the amounts at this point. So we will bring those back in a revision with the budget. And then Prop 123 as well, again, the amount that was previously allocated to the base support level will remain, so there will be any cuts there. But again, the appropriation is yet to be determined. So once we have those amounts, we'll bring it back to the board. The best news of all is that the aggregate expenditure limit, so they took action to remedy this for at least a couple of years for this '25-'26 year and '26-'27 because there is no permanent solution in sight. So we'll see how long this is going to last. Again, this is just the ADM, a chart that I usually present and the budget was prepared, showing a pretty flat ADM from the previous year. Maintenance and operation increased by 4.4 million from last year's budget. Again, that will change once we have those allocations. Classroom site fund increased $2 million from last year's budget. District additional assistance, an increase of $1.6 million. And then bond building adjacent ways, a slight decrease there because we now exhausted our bond building funds, about $80,000. Then federal and state grants, there was a decrease. We're being conservative and making sure that we don't overestimate what we feel we're entitled to. So we're showing a decrease there of 7.4 million. And then in other funds, there's an increase of $2.5 million. And you know, that is attributed to instructional improvement fund and then the debt service obligation for this coming fiscal year, like to pay off our, the debt from the old bond. So like I said before, any budget adjustments due to changes in ADM, allocations, carryover, additional revenues from the state will be reflected in the December 2025 budget revision. And this is just a snapshot on this next slide, the fund groupings and showing the budget that we last looked at for fiscal year '25, about 259.5 million. And this proposed and adopted budget, hopefully if you approve it, will be 262.5 million or a difference of $3 million. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. Oh, not quite. This is, these are just the allocations in the override budget and showing where the monies are allocated and the positions that are being funded for the maintenance and operation override. The total override amount is 8,155.11. This is maintenance operation and then the next slide is a capital override or district additional assistance. And we're maintaining the same allocation amounts as we promised the voters, totaling to $7 million. And then the estimated tax rate, again, this is just what the district calculates. The tax rate is approved by the Pima County Board of Supervisors sometime in the month of August. We're estimating the tax rate to remain pretty flat there, just a, there's an ascent difference as you can see on the right column. And I think I'm done now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions? No. Thank you so much.
Okay. I don't know if there's any questions from the public.
Do we have any questions from the public? Mr. Gastelum, did you have a question?
No.
Comment? No. Is there any other comments from the public? Only once, twice, and a third time.
Any other public comments?
Nope. Hearing done. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Roque. Mr. Bustamante.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Jaramillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Aye.
And Mrs. Quintero.
Aye, thank you. And we adjourned until, oh, no, 6:30. Moving right along. So we'll call this meeting to order the regular meeting. Please rise with a salute to the flag and the land acknowledgement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
SUSD land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we gather as a Sunnyside Unified School District in a culturally and linguistically rich community on the land of the Tahana-Atham Nation and Pascayaki Tribe, past and present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous people who have been stewards of the land. As a learning institution, we commit to learning how to work, serve, educate, and uplift our youth while maintaining a diverse and inclusive environment with respect and appreciation of all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amen.
Roque. Mr. Bustamante.
Present.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Mr. Jaramillo.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Mrs. Quintero.
Present. Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Roque. Mr. Bustamante.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez.
Aye.
Mr. Jaramillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero.
Aye. Thank you. Any government more comments? Mr. Rodriguez?
Just one, I'd like to, for those of you who don't know, I'd like to acknowledge our superintendent for his 51st birthday today and I think we need to sing "Happy Birthday" to him.
Oh, no, okay, so "Happy Birthday."
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Gastelum. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Shalom, shalom.
Where's the piñata?
Where, where, where? It's out there. So any other comments?
None.
None? No? No, we're good?
We're excited.
Ms. Hernandez, did you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's report.
All right, Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, I'm trying not to blush here.
Too late.
Got me all rattled here. All right, so superintendent's report, Los Amigos Technology Academy visits University of Arizona. To celebrate the end of the summer reading program in partnership with the University of Arizona, students from Los Amigos participated in a field trip to the U of A's campus. They were given a small tour by campus representatives and celebrated the completion of their reading challenge at the campus bookstore. During the reception, they read books, completed crafts, and were individually called up to receive their reading certificate. So you can see in these pictures that students had a really nice time there. So thank you for, to the University of Arizona for hosting them. Sunnyside Diablo's Folklorico. Sunnyside High School's 25-26 Diablo's attended the Hidalgo workshops hosted by Ballet Folklorico Tapatio to enhance their dance technique and prepare for an engaging school year. Actually, Tapatio performed that Victoria Teresa Arias function as well. Sunnyside softball, current and former Sunnyside Blue Devils who play softball are working hard at Jet Sports, training all sports. Tucson caught up with some of the athletes to see what they are looking forward to and how they're making the most of their athletic careers. Class of 2025 graduate Tatiana Vega is looking forward to beginning her freshman year at the University of Texas El Paso because the city reminds her of Tucson.
Yeah.
Class of 2024, yeah, same heat. Class of 2024 graduate Lauren Carbajal, who's currently playing for Western New Mexico State University, says focusing on her nutrition has helped her keep energized on and off the offseason. So congratulations to those players. KBOA Back to School Drive, save the date for the KBOAs Back to School Drive. This year, the donation drive will take place at Sierra K8 School on Monday, July 28th from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We hope the community can donate school supplies such as notebooks, pencils, crayons, markers, and any classroom essentials that will keep our students, that will support our student's success. This concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Fives having their back-to-school event July 19th from 8:00 to 10:00 at Al Pebo's Neighborhood Center. Thank you. All right, call to the audience. Moving on to consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Second.
Roque. Mr. Bustamante.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Jaramillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero.
Aye. Thank you. General functions, oh, Ms. Walters, would you like to come back up?
Be back.
So the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual expenditure budget action.
Well, given that I don't have any other questions to answer, the administrative recommendation is that the governing board approve the fiscal year '25-'26 adopted annual expenditure budget as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual expenditure budget as presented. Second.
Thank you. Roque. Mr. Bustamante.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Jaramillo.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero.
Aye.
We have Mr. John Ogley, Food Service Department update. This is beautiful, by the way, thank you.
Glad you liked it. Good evening, President Quintero, members of the board, Superintendent Gastelum, here to provide a food service update, talk about what's cooking in food services, a little bit of past, present, and moving forward into next year. So I'll start you off real quick with just a little graph. Hard to believe I'm about to enter my 20th year here in Sunnyside. So this graph just kind of shows food service return over the 20 years. You can see at the far left, coming in for a reason, obviously. The first year was minus $400,000 before I got here. There was a subsidy in food service. So we were definitely hired to do a job. You can notice a trajectory on the rise to the right, all the way until about 2015 when we had a return of $2 million on the 510 account. That was actually at that time a record for SFE, for biggest surplus ever. We're up to about 180 school districts now, so that was a big milestone for Sunnyside and SFE and our partnership. Continuing to the right, there's a little bit of a down slope, but those are like 1.7, 1.8 million years, very solid years. And then if we just take out the one big dip there was obviously, we know what that is, that's when COVID hit in March and the revenue faucet just shut off for a few months. And even at that, we were right at about a million dollars. And numbers are numbers, you need relativity. I can say about 90% of school districts never come anywhere near a million dollar return. So if that's our worst year, that's phenomenal. But we can probably take that out of the mix. We hope to never go back to that again, or that means there was, our friend COVID is back or something similar. So that's the low point. We don't anticipate going back to that. Right after that, you can see the big spike up. That is when things were put into place, kind of in reaction to COVID, and we were able to serve weekend meals. And again, that was another record year where we were like right at $5 million, but it would actually be a bad thing if we went back to that because again, we're dealing with what we don't want to deal with. So if we take those two spikes out and went back to the left, we're back now to like this upward trajectory, pretty much year after, year after year, as you can see these last three years. So going to the next slide talking about just condensing it to like the last three years in kind of a snapshot, I just wanted to point out, we all know that enrollment's gone down a little bit. It's kind of slowed, but we're still losing, losing a few kids. But you'll see, we're up in meals and we're up in surplus, which, you know, I'm proud of the team for that. A lot of hard work goes into that. It's hard for a restaurant to make more money with less customers. You're, you're swimming against the rip tide to try and accomplish that. So I wanted to make sure we, we illustrated that and we just closed out 2025 at a little over $3 million, which is our all-time record in a non-COVID year. So we're beating the years when we had 17,000 students. So we'll talk a little bit on next slides about how we do that and how we continue to do that because it's somewhat counterintuitive and I wanted to illustrate that in the presentation. So challenges, the challenges to be, we encountered to be able to accomplish that and still moving forward, obvious, obviously, the big one is the decline in enrollment, which seems to have leveled off some here lately, so that's kind of going away. And then I would say, coming back from COVID, one thing that I learned was just a kind of a shift in the financial climate. We had to react very quickly because I saw kids bringing lunch that didn't bring lunch before. And I think some of that was, you know, maybe there was still some nervousness about going to the cafeteria, number one. Number two, you know, even things like the child tax credit was being paid out monthly instead of waiting till the end, more disposable income. And being a competitive guy, I don't want to be, I don't want to have years that are behind the previous year. So we had to jump in and react to that and figure out, how do we get these kids back eating? Because I anticipated more of hitting the reset button and back to normal and that is not what we had when we first came back. So to combat that and still continue an upward trajectory, we had to talk about enhancing the menu options, increasing the engagement with students, and figuring out ways to offer more things to re-stimulate their curiosity and interest in going to the cafeteria because same old, same old wasn't necessarily getting the job done. So I wanted to kind of remind everyone, just a quick little slide about menu options. Typical day in our cafeterias, elementary school, there's three menu options. You bump up to middle school, there's, there's 12. In high school, somewhere between 15 and 20. And I've always believed that it's good for students, part of the excitement of going to the next level. And what that brings is more, more interesting food and not what you've been eating like the last five years as part of your graduation and your new experience. So just in case you didn't know, that's kind of on par with what we're doing all the time. So you can see, I listed our different, our different kind of concepts there, the different varieties of food kids have. I certainly know when I went to high school, I didn't have 15 or 20 options to pick from. So some of the things we're looking at, and I'm a little bit out of order here, but with the elementary kids, because what we've had to do is, I'm going to, I'm going to go out of order, I'm going to say, I spent some time at some middle schools this year and I met with like the student council at Challenger. And things that were coming up is, and this is where it gets me, it's like they always have siblings at like the next level and they're like, mister, why can't we get the grill outs like the high school kids have? Why can't we get the chicken snowballs, which is like, it's like a KFC bowl, very popular thing at the high school? So we started implementing some of these things at the middle school, which when I do that, now it's like, what am I going to do to make the high school better? But you'll see in the next slide, some of the big increases in counts we had, I was like, I'll come do that and then I want you guys to help me on the announcements and I want to feed everybody in the school because I'm going to have to come do it myself because we don't have enough staffing at the middle schools as we do the big high schools to put a couple of people outside with the grill. So I'll come back to the elementary in a second. So I gave you some, some data there. Actually, I worked with Kathy Dong and Hellic over at Sierra and we talked and we said, hey, let's do these. And what helped me also is they've been at Desert View and they'd seen these and they really helped me a lot in advertising with the kids, getting the staff behind it. And sure enough, we didn't open the cafeteria, we took, we took the cafeteria outside and as you can see from the numbers on the slide, every, like, we served the attendance factor. So they, they backed up what they said they wanted and now over the last couple of months, we've trained the whole staff to be able to do that. We did one, one a month in March, April, and May, and I'm working with these principals to maybe do it twice a month or maybe up to once a week. Of course, they'll get tired of the burgers if it's too much and we'll do chicken and other things like we do at the high school. But I'm, I'm expecting to have a spike at the middle schools and we've already bought grills and the whole setup for the other three middle schools too. So if we're doing that at middle schools, I'm going to have to up my game at the high school because they're going to be like, oh, we have the, we have the middle school menu. I already know what's coming. I don't have to look too hard. So we're looking at some new things for, new things for the high school that I'm working on, maybe like a Sonoran Dog station.
This is for you.
Do I have customer number one already?
Yes, yes.
All right, awesome. Of course, it, you know, the, the hard part of it is, I mean, I feel like we do a great job for you on the caterings, but all these things have to be school compliant. So when I'm saying Sonoran Dog, it's like I got to dupe the kids into not realizing it's a turkey hot dog and, and dress it up real nice, but when it's time to, huh? Yeah, like the sushi and other things. It's, so I got a, so we're working on some elevations for the high school. I expect some, some nice improvement. I did the, the snowballs at Challenger too and the kids came from that. I used them as my test, kind of my test site, my, my pilot this last year. And some things are coming to the middle school because middle schools are really where it starts to, you have to work harder to get kids to go to the cafeteria because it's not cool. So the food better be good because they'd rather be cool than full. So, so we're working on that. And then going back to the, I'm going to go back to my elementary slide, sorry for jumping around. With the elementary kids, what I really want to do is just be more engaging. You can see a couple of the photos there. You can see we surprised Mr. Birthday Boy over here with our Manny Panda when we did one of the roving chefs. I believe we went and served DLT some lunch and just walking through the cafeteria with that, that panda, the kids were going bananas. So incorporating maybe some, some giveaways if you eat school lunch on that day and having the panda and just some more marketing tools and that, that, those are the kind of examples that I'm talking about with the engagement. The picture above that is, we have these bikes that attaches to a blender and on like Mexican Food Day, we're making salsa in those and the kids get to then get their own salsa. They come through the line, get their quesadilla, they stop, they do 20 seconds on the blender bike and then we're given just more activity and reason for them to want to come through the lunch line. Just, it's cool, it's a fun time spending the time with them and then just being at the end of the day, more engaging and just trying to drive the numbers because we're competing against ourselves right now and it's, it's not that easy. So that was pretty much what I wanted to cover, open to questions. We're looking forward to implementing everything I just discussed that we haven't already done this next year and trying to beat this year, next year, serve more kids and have a nice surplus and help the district out with whatever we can.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank you for all you've done and always taking care of the board members no matter where you go. And I mean, your setup is awesome, you know, your food is delicious and, but I'd also like to acknowledge the staff that you have, particularly, I spoke to Mr. Gastelum previously about the staff that you have at Los Niños. Sometimes they're short-staffed, they only have one custodian, and so whatever the principal needs, they're on top of it. Not only do they help out, but their kitchen is impeccable. It's clean, the kids are orderly, they take care of everything, and they don't have to be asked to do anything, they just do it. So I just like to acknowledge the staff there and I'm sure it's the same district-wide. And again, your presentation, the chile rellanos were delicious today, by the way. Delicious. So thank you very much for the delicious food and of course, your presentation is just awesome.
Thank you for the feedback, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Jaramillo.
Thank you as well. And make sure that Mr. Panda goes out, maybe in December. Too hot right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any volunteers to wear the suit?
You're making it sound so easy, but you have a very good success story and just keep it up. Your kids are going to come sooner or later and you proved it right here. Thank you very much for what you do.
Yes, I do.
If you ever need a volunteer to grill any, any, at any school, I'm willing to wa- to volunteer.
That's awesome, cool. And I want to thank you for all the work that you've done in the cafeterias right now. I mean, Okatillo is beautiful.
Oh, have you seen Okatillo? We just finished that. Yeah, I think it looks great. You're welcome.
Amazing what you can do. Thank you. Mister Gustafen, you have something?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think just saying what everybody else is saying, you know, big thank you to, to you and your team, Mister Oakley, for always, you know, taking care of our, our students. Um, you know, I was, I was gonna joke about if you ever need anyone to pilot or taste things, you know, I mean. Tears and I'd love to see some of the adults on the blender bike too.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So I mean, you know, earning, earning, when we have DLT, we might have to earn some of our, our lunch there on the blender bike, but you know.
Big by example.
Model, right?
Yeah.
And so I, you know, I want to reiterate what Ms. Quintero said about um Okatillo. You know, it's, it came out really, really nice. And, and I want to acknowledge Mister Oakley, because every summer, there's a project of enhancing and, and, you know, making over one of our cafeterias, whether it's benches, whether it's paint, whether it's flooring, and sometimes it's all the above. And so it makes a big difference, you know, it makes a big difference for um not only our students that come and they feel good about, hey, look, you know, we got new tables, we got, you know, we got the, I call them the fat heads, right? The, the stickers that are on the wall and on the tables and, and, but also our staff. You know, our employees feel good that people care and people are taking care of them. So I wanna, I want to thank you for, for doing that and, and, and the food's, you know, you know, it's, it's been said here, food's great. So and, and so we'll, you know, we'll continue to work with you and work with our schools and, and get feedback from our schools, you know. And, and I know you, you welcome the feedback um to, to always, you're always wanting to improve the process and the experience. But, but you know, we're, we're very fortunate that our students do have choices, you know. And, and I love that you started grilling at the middle schools, because that's, that's always popular, right? So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And, and this is Gonzalo, Mister Oakley. I just wanted to also um say thank you for investing in our school district. The kitchens are beautiful and I really appreciate all the work that you and your staff do year-round. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, so next we have our superintendent performance goals, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, our goals.
Yes, thank you, President Quintero, members of the board, members of the audience. Um, on June twenty-fourth, we had a study session where we presented uh five uh goals. You know, and we went into detail about each and every goal. And we wanted to formally bring them here today uh to hopefully get them approved. But before we, we do that, I want to go over them publicly, so uh the public can hear. And, and once, once hopefully they're all approved, we make sure that these are uh visible on the website. You know, in case, you know, people have any questions or if they're looking for them, they're, they're there all year. You know, one, some of the feedback I received was, was definitely to work on some metrics. And the team and I went back and worked on, on some of the metrics. So um I will start with goal one. So goal one is, is an academic goal, academic performance goal. Um, the chief academic officer will work with the curriculum instruction team and site leadership to successfully show growth from the previous twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Growth will be measured on the following assessments. So for K-two, it, it would be the fast bridge uh reading, um, which, which is not a state assessment, but it's, it's one of the assessments that we use. Uh, the second bullet there is, is the, the state assessment for ELA in mathematics, grades three through eight. And then we have uh the science assessment, state assessment uh for grades five, eight and eleven. Those are the grade levels that get tested. And then for high school, we have ACT aspire, that's at the, at the freshman level. And then again, uh ACT is taken by eleventh graders, so ninth grade, eleventh grade. Uh, the metric we're using is a rubric um that breaks down um every one of those assessments that I spoke to. And the way it works is, you know, if, if, if there's no growth, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not getting points. So it's a scale from zero to two points. Uh, so I'll give you an example for the first one. So the reading benchmark for fast bridge, grades K through two. If, if there's, you know, if there's a, a decline up to, to one point five percent, then it's zero points. If it's, if it's uh less than that, um, then it's one point. But if it's, if there is growth above that, um, then it's, it's, it's two points, right? And so that's the breakdown uh pretty much for all the way through um Arizona Science there. And so we also have a section that talks, or that speaks to minimally proficient. And in that area, we want to um lower, right? Lower the, the percentage of minimally proficient. And so if, if, if it, obviously if it goes up, I'm not earning any points, right? But if we lower it by a percent, then it's two points. If it's less than a percent, then it's, it's, it's still in the positive, it's, it's, it's one point. So those are for, for uh minimally proficient in, in um ELA and math. And then the same thing would be for uh ACT aspire and uh, and ACT, where it would be the percent proficient to, to show growth. So there's a total of twenty-four points here. Um, meeting the goal would be at twelve points. And then there's a bonus point for four-year uh cohort graduation rates. So if we improve graduation rates uh by more than a percent, it's two points. Up to a percent, one point. And if it's less than that, then it's, it's at zero points. And so um that is the rubric that, that we presented at the study session and that we're presenting here formally for goal number one. Um, and I can stop between each goal if you'd like me to.
Yeah, is there any way that we can include that uh going forward underneath of the rubric? So we can have something to look at? I know that we, we've had it previously. Is there any way that we can attach it here somehow underneath that first one, so we can?
It will be, this is ours.
Right, once, once it's all approved, that we can definitely attach it. We can add a leak or we can, we can attach it for you.
No, that's a, that's a, I like the chart that you used, we went over. And it, it really defines where the classes showing proficiency.
All right, any, any other questions on goal one? Okay, so moving on to goal two, uh family and community engagement. Uh, we started this last year and, and we hadn't done this in several years. And um, you know, along with the team, we facilitate quarterly parent community forums, creating an ongoing dialogue and ensuring, ensuring transparency around district goals and soliciting feedback from the community. So in addition, there'll be, you know, the, the expectation that although we do these quarterly, the sites, there's an expectation for site level uh to focus on increasing opportunities for parents to have voice around key topics, which will result in ownership and building a greater community. So not only are we doing it district-wide and inviting and being transparent with our community and our parents on important topics, but there's an expectation for each school to hold their events as well on their sites, you know, for their parents. And so the metric here is, is, you know, we, we talked about having evening opportunities as well for, and we're gonna do that. And so we may have, you know, one or more of those. We'll, we'll, we'll pilot that and see how that goes. And if we have a better turnout, then we, we definitely can make changes down the road. So, you know, we'll, we'll uh, so, you know, bullet one is the number of, of forums that will ho- hold. Uh, metric, or bullet two, it speaks to attendance. And we will be tracking attendance for each school site. So there will be an expectation for school sites to, to, you know, fill their seats there with parents. And so um, you know, we'll make sure to, to share that with sites. The most important thing here is, is the feedback, right? The survey response rates from parents. And, and that worked out really well, where we got a lot of data and we have a lot of documents in terms of some of the questions that we've put out there and some of the feedback we got. As you can imagine, um, what, something super important to our parents is, is safe and orderly, right? We, we get a lot of feedback in terms of safe and orderly. We had a chance for them to tour Sunnyside High School in the last forum, so that was very, got a lot of great feedback there. And then thematic focus, you know, we're gonna align topics um with strategic priorities and, and pivot when necessary. And so when I speak to the pivot pieces, you know, sometimes there's current events in the community that we have to a- address right away. And one of the things that we pivoted last year was the social media threats that we had on September sixteenth last year. Um, and also, you know, in January, when, when there was a new administration, you know, um, there was, there was some fear in the community, so we pivoted there. And our goal here is, is obviously to be transparent. Our goal is to provide resources to, to families. And our goal is to make sure they are not fearful in coming forward, that there's no anxiety. And so it, it, I think it loosens things up a little bit when they, when, when you're up front, face-to-face with them in, in, in some of these uh, you know, in, in these uh events here. So any questions for goal two?
Um, this is Gonzalo. I don't have a question, I just have a suggestion. If we, coming into the new school year, if we're able to hold um any parent meetings, family meetings regarding um what's happening at the federal level with ICE pickups? I think just being able to provide information, I'm sure that we could figure out organizations to collaborate with, but just giving information on what our district is doing and then what their rights are, I think would be really helpful to um being able to provide some, some sort of sense of uh calmness to the district.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Inandis. I mean, the, and these are, those are the type of current events we're, we're talking about, you know, to provide resources, to know your rights, you know, those are the, how we'll be looking at some of these topics. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into that. And um, I think the, the most important thing is providing a, a space where people feel safe, right? And so um, I know our, our teams are working with families and, and providing some information and resources. So thank you for that. Um, so moving on to goal three, uh strategic plan implementation and engagement. So the, i- in collaboration with the DLT, uh we'll develop and launch an implementation plan for the newly adopted five-year strategic plan. A marketing and communication strategy will also be developed to ensure stakeholder understanding, engagement and ownership of the plan's goals, especially as they relate to improving the student experience and advancing district graduate profiles. So um, this is a work in progress, but we're at the point where we're wrapping that up. Um, we've been meeting with um, you know, the team that's been guiding us all along, educational elements, and they've been pretty phenomenal. We had a strategic planning team that helped design the strategic plan. And, and we, we hope to share it at administrative summit here in the next couple of days. And we hope to share this on opening day. So uh, again, a five-year plan, so goal, you know, bullet one there, uh create a strategic plan implementation roadmap to break down the five-year plan into annual priorities. So we plan to present that um at a future board meeting, or it could be a study session. And we're, we've been working on that roadmap to, to explain what does year one look like? What does year two look like, you know, what is year, and so forth. Getting the word out, developing communications and marketing strategy that includes making our plan widely visible to our constituents. That means uh students, staff, community, so that they understand the importance of a strategic plan, right? And so it's not just a pretty little poster that sits on the website. You know, we have to explain our intentions and, and, and what our focus is, right? In, in the next five years to improve the student experience. And then the last piece there is utilize various communication channels for strategic plan dissemination, uh using, you know, all our, our different avenues to communicate, websites, social media newsletters, community meetings. Um, the sites will have a big responsibility to understand the plan and know the plan as, as when they get in front of parents, that they're also able to speak to it, right? So it can't be just, you know, the leadership team speaking to this. People have to fully understand uh the plan and, and uh be able to uh definitely um share the, the critical pieces of it. So um, so we'll be bringing more of a, a formal process as, as, and to show that, how we're gonna do that. All right, um, any questions on goal three?
And you're so much Sunnyside too, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I mean, we would, we would love, and you know, I think the neat thing is we had some students in the other day that were, served on the strategic planning team. And um, you know, we're, we're, we're recording some video clips with them. We don't want to spill the beans here yet, but.
Okay.
But they, they can speak to it. And it's, it's pretty impressive that they were a part of this process. And, and you heard some of those students during the strategic planning. Um, and it's impressive that they can, they can elaborate and speak to the importance of it and why we have one. So um, you know, we, we definitely look forward to, to rolling that out. And I think the big question is always like, who was a part of that? And who made the decisions? And, and you know, we, we have some good data, some good documents that show this was inclusive. I mean, we, we reached out to all our constituents to, to have input. Um, I believe it was over nine thousand individuals that we had feedback from, um, which is, which is a pretty good number.
Mister Houdini?
I'd like to give kudos to our marketing process we're having for the open enrollment on TV, so.
Yeah.
I think that's going over well.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear those on the radio on my way to work sometimes. They, you know, Katrina's famous voice, you know, coming on and. So it's pretty, it's pretty cool. So we're, we're out there, we got a billboard out there that looks really nice. Um, you know, we've taken a lot of, the team's done a remarkable job with the leadership of Ms. Felix and in terms of putting us out there, right? I mean, you go down Campbell, you see the, the banners there. You go down Twelfth Avenue, you see the banners. Um, so they're, they're uh, you know, we, we got some great schools and great programs to promote, so. So moving on here, goal four is a five-year capital improvement plan. Um, as, as you all know, um, you know, we, there was a capital needs assessment done by H-two. Um, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this here just to stay on pace here. So um, there was a capital needs assessment using available district resources to maximize impact. This plan will guide the allocation of funds towards the most critical infrastructure, safety and modernization needs, ensuring equitable, sustainable improvements across all schools while maintaining fiscal responsibility and enhancing the overall learning environment for the students and staff. So, you know, the metric here is, is we have to maximize funding. I mean, that's, that's a challenge in itself. You know, you guys, all of you saw the, the numbers um and what it's gonna take to bring our schools up to date. And so we're really focused on that year one, that those um, you know, those, those uh suggestions that are, or those, those pieces that are most critical. So, you know, we, we do have um projects identified um and, and according to the facilities condition assessment, you know, we're, we're gonna use capital, um, capital override, food service, monies, et cetera. And, and we'll be bringing a list forward uh with that. We're working with H-two to develop that list of critical year-one repairs. We're definitely gonna pursue funding from SFD. And so one of our goals here is to identify and apply for a minimum of five capital projects that may be eligible for funding. And so we've been, we, we'll knock on wood here, you know, Mister Dr. Morado and, and Liz Greenlee and his team have done a phenomenal job of always trying to use F- SFD, you know. And, and so it requires a lot of paperwork, a lot of documentation. And we've had uh projects funded uh through that. Number of projects completed, we definitely want to complete a minimum of the seventy percent of the projects identified as immediate repairs in the facilities condition assessment. Because we also know that we can say, here's a list and we want to complete this list, and there's gonna be emergencies that come up. A broken water main, a roof leaking, an H vacuum.
Don't say anymore.
I know. Monsoons are coming, so, you know, so, so there's, there's gonna be those um, sometimes they're, it's a little surprises, right? That we'll have to deal with and, and the team does a great job of responding to that. Uh, survey response rates, one of the things that the department takes a great deal um in doing is they get surveys, survey response from principals and department feedback. And so our goal is to have at least eighty percent satisfaction rate, right? Making sure that they're happy with the work we are doing, they're happy with the pace we're doing the work in, because sometimes these, these projects can take a little time. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, and, and I'll, I'll speak to time a little bit, going off topic here a little bit, but um, we've gotten a lot done this summer. You know, we have a small window to get projects done when you don't have, you know, students on campuses or employees on campuses. or employees on campuses. And as I'm driving around the district, I mean, parking lots are getting done, portables are getting demolished. Um, you know, we're, you know, we had a, a team over there at Drexel working on the cafeteria. I mean, so there's, there's a lot happening, you know, right now, you know, not only from our, our vendors, but also our, our staff, you know, that's out there working and, and, you know, getting ready. We're going to launch here in a couple of weeks, so. And then goal five, um, you know, we, we just felt with the climate that Ms. Hernandez had talked to a little bit about here and, and what's going on across the nation is, is we got to pay, pay attention to student wellbeing and family support. So K directors, along with student services department, will work on, will work with school leaders to activate community partners and local organizations to promote attendance, uh, student wellbeing and provide resources for students and families. And so, um, this is a challenging one because there's less resources and resources are getting cut and there's less people to respond. So, you know, we're going to take it upon ourselves to find a way to support our families. And so we will track the number of community partners. We have some identified already that we've met with that are committed to serving our sites. We'll track the number of students and families at each site, utilizing resources, providing and receiving referrals, um, for internal and external services. Anecdotal evidence of successful interventions will be provided by K director, student services leadership to demonstrate family engagement and improve student outcomes. So it's, it's, um, it really is weight-bearing on our counselors, social workers, our health professionals because they're trying to find resources. And, and, you know, one of the partners we have here as well is the Sunnyside Foundation. That's always been, you know, very easy and flexible to work with us. But, you know, L P K N C, we have Amistades out there we're working with and just to name a few of the organizations. And, um, but I, I get emails every couple of weeks about organizations that are losing some funding, you know? And so it's, it's definitely, um, challenging. And so any questions about goal five?
Ms. Hernandez, did you have any questions on goal five?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like, um, we're going to take a motion if we have no more questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 superintendent performance goals as submitted.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Bustamante?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero?
Aye, thank you.
Uh, next we have the Arizona School Board Association selection of the board's official representative, alternative delegate assembly. Show the next A S B A, mm, law conferences in September. Who is going? You're going?
I don't know yet.
You got, you, Ms. Hernandez, are you going?
I'm not sure yet. I will find out in August.
So, um, you're elected because I'm not going. Um, we need a delegate, we need a delegate to represent us and a, and an alternate, so.
I can be the alternate, I just don't know the dates. I don't have them in front of me, I'm driving.
September the 6th and 7th. Oh, oh, for the assembly is just the 6th of September.
I can be the alternate.
You'll be an alternate?
I'll be the delegate.
You'll be the delegate, okay. All right, so would you like to make a motion to make Mr. Rodriguez the delegate and Ms. Conzuelo the alternate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, like to nominate Mr. Rodriguez to be our delegate for the, what is it?
September 6th assembly?
Delegate assembly to be held on Saturday, September 6th, 2025. And Ms. Conzuelo Hernandez to be the alternate.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Bustamante?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero?
Aye, thank you, thank you, Ms. Hernandez and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we did that in one motion, so does it matter?
We're good.
Okay, so suggestion for future agenda items? Anybody? Ms. Hernandez, do you have any future agenda items you'd like to see?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. Moving on to adjournment.
Wow, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Bustamante?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Haddamio?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintero?
Aye. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We finished record time.
I hope they celebrate you.
Happy birthday to Irma tomorrow.
Who's birthday tomorrow? Oh, Irma, happy birthday tomorrow.
Shall we sing to her now?